Good evening. Welcome to the Wall Township Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. Please stand for the flag salute. Mr. Smythe, sunshine announcement and roll call, please.
Yes, this is the Wall Township Board of Education meeting for which adequate notice under the Open Public Meeting Act was provided by notice to the Co-Star, Asbury Park Press, Township Clerk's Office, All Wall Township Public Schools, and Board Administration Office on January 9th, 2025. Take a roll call. Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Adnizia. Ms. Barbier.
Here.
Mr. Brearton.
Here.
Mr. Buffa. Ms. Di Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Wondrack.
Here.
Mr. Maliff.
Here.
At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session for those items indicated on the agenda. Ms. Di Giovanni, second Mr. Wondrack. We anticipate coming back to session at 7:00 PM. All in favor, rather? All approved.
Thank you.
Forgot that.
Thanks.
Who lives buggered out? Little Tommy Tucker song. Bow wow bow. Bow wow bow. Blue summer cloud. Little Tommy Tucker song. Bow wow.
Play it all three parts.
Hallelujah. Hallel, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelu- hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelu- hallelujah. Ninety-three million miles from the sun. People get ready, get ready. 'Cause here it comes. It's a light, a beautiful light. Over the horizon into our eyes. Oh, how beautiful. Oh my beautiful mother. She's told me in your life you will go far. If you do it right, you'll love where you are. Just know wherever you go, you can always belong.
I want a present I wish made by me. All my dearest words shouted in a hurry, 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 hurry. The guest must rush. My plea is a moving traffic. It's a business to be free. Come on, move it to the guest must rush. Hurry, hurry, hurry. That's all the job's done. Bow wow bow. Who lives buggered out? Little Tommy Tucker song. Bow wow bow. Bow wow bow. Blue summer cloud. Little Tommy Tucker song. Bow wow.
Bow, bow. Do, re, mi, fa, si, do.
Okay, play it all three parts.
Alleluia, alle, alleluia. Alleluia, alleluia. Allelu, alleluia. Alleluia, alleluia. Allelu, alleluia. Ninety-three million miles from the sun. People get ready, get ready. Cause here it comes. It's a light, a beautiful light. Over the horizon into our eyes. Oh, how beautiful. Oh, my beautiful mother. She told me in your life you will go far. If you do it right, you'll love where you are. Just know, wherever you go. You can always belong. Alleluia, alleluia. The pieces are simple, you see. I want the presents I wish made by me. All my tears were shouting in America. We're going to start it and the best must rush. My feet is moving traffic is a business to be played. I'll move into the best must rush. Hurry, hurry, hurry. That's all the job I'm doing. Bow, bow, bow. Who is that girl now? Little Tommy Tucker song. Bow, bow, bow. Bow, bow, bow. Who's that girl now? Little Tommy Tucker song. Bow, bow. Do, re, mi, fa, si, do.
Okay, play it all three parts.
Alleluia, alle, alleluia. Alleluia, alleluia. Allelu, alleluia. Alleluia, alleluia. Allelu, alleluia. Ninety-three million miles from the sun. People get ready, get ready. Cause here it comes. It's a light, a beautiful light. Over the horizon into our eyes. Oh, how beautiful. Oh, my beautiful mother. She told me in your life you will go far. If you do it right, you'll love where you are. Just know, wherever you go. You can always belong.
Good evening and welcome to the Wall Township Board of Education meeting for March 18th, 2025. Please stand for the flag salute and the honor guard of the NNDCC.
Color guard! South, out and冲! Carry colors. Cut. Mount out the colors! Color guard, forward march. Right wheel, march. Color guard, present. Colors!
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mount out the colors! Carry. Colors. Cut. Color guard, right wheel, march. Forward march. Color guard, halt. Color guard, yes, miss.
Okay, Mr. Smythe, roll call please, reconvening to public session.
Take a roll call on Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Adenizio?
Here.
Ms. Barbier?
Here.
Mr. Burerton? Mr. Buffa?
Here.
Ms. De Giovanni?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wondrack?
Here.
Mr. Malif?
Here.
At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Handterhand for the student showcase.
Thank you so much, Mr. Malif. It is my pleasure this evening. It's wonderful to see so many people at our meeting this evening, especially. It's a thrill to have some of our students here, so, welcome. And I would like to invite our high school principal, Mr. Kevin Davis, up to start the first recognition. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
One who's done a lot of hard work for one of our clubs in support of our mock trial team. And what I'd like to do is invite Kearney Grace, who's president of mock trial, a 12th grader at Wall High School, and Katie Durant, vice president of mock trial, 11th grader, to come up and say a few words about Mr. Tracy, who's here with us tonight, and then we can thank him and recognize him. So come on up, girls.
All right. Honorable members of the Board of Education, my name is Kearney and I am the president of the Wall High School Debate and Mock Trial Club, and I've been a member since my sophomore year.
And my name is Catherine Durant and I'm the vice president of the Mock Trial Club. And I've been in this club for my freshman year.
Please allow us to show the students appreciation for all the time, effort, and expertise Mr. Tracy has devoted to our club. Mr. Tracy, who has 21 years of experience as an attorney coach, has been working with the Wall High School Mock Trial Team for the past 10 years. Every team that competes in the New Jersey State Mock Trial Competition must have an attorney coach as well as a teacher coach. Mr. Tracy is our attorney coach. Every year during competition season, he volunteers his time and expertise in order to assist the student attorneys and witnesses with crafting their cases for the year. This is no small feat. Covering both the defense and prosecution, Mr. Tracy effectively takes on two extra cases, all free of charge alongside his already intense workload as practicing attorney.
In order to help the mock trial, he spends all of his time and effort going through all of the cases, combing through all information to help us better understand the case. Not only does he do his defense, but prosecution, so double the work. He volunteers all his time and resources on helping us. Even if he has family events, he has his own social life, work life, and everything. He does not get paid for this and he uses all his time and effort to help us. And it really, we wouldn't ever have gone as far as we would have been in mock trial without him, so.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy, and thank you, members of the board, for allowing us to share with you the special contributions from Mr. Tracy.
I do want to add too that our advisor from the high school, Mr. Gavin, sends his regrets for not being here tonight. He's actually a member of the Board of Education in his community where he resides, and they had a meeting tonight, so he could not be here. But thank you again for this opportunity to recognize Mr. Tracy. And I think we want to invite him down and we have a certificate?
I'm pretty sure we do want to give him some proper thank you.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Tracy, if you come down and join us, thank you.
Mr. Tracy, thank you so much.
It's my pleasure to be here.
Oh, well, thank you.
On behalf of the Board of Education, thank you very much for your efforts for our behalf of our students.
It's been my pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Sure, certainly. Where would you like me to?
You know what? I'm sorry. I'm gonna have us move this way so we can fit everybody in.
That was such a wonderful way to start our meeting this evening. Our next up, I'm going to introduce our assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction to move over with our next aspect of the student highlights. So, Ms. McCann? Thank you, Dr. Henterhand. For those of you who were able to be watching the video prior to our meeting starting, March is Music in Our Schools Month, so I am going to ask our music supervisor, Dr. Christine Kennedy, to come up and share some of the events that we have done in the schools, and we also have an opportunity to highlight some of our amazing music students in all of our grade levels. Dr. Kennedy?
Good evening, everyone. As we celebrate Music in Our Schools Month, I wanted to take a moment to recognize the incredible dedication, passion, and talent of our students and educators. The video you just watched captures just a small snapshot of the amazing band, orchestra, choir, and general music happenings throughout a district. A special thank you to Ms. Buritz for her help in creating this wonderful video. First, I would like to recognize our outstanding music educators who bring the joy of music to life every day. Ms. Carol Schminkowski from Old Mill School, she's right behind me. Ms. Victoria McGlocklin from Allenwood, Ms. Sandra Addison from West Belmar School, Mr. Kyle McGlocklin from Central School, and our elementary adjunct teachers, Ms. Anita Co., Mr. Doug DeHaze, Ms. Jessica Berube, and Ms. Tessa O'Boyle. At Wall Intermediate School, I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Victoria June, Mr. Mike Montalto, Ms. Angelina Francise, and orchestra adjunct, Ms. Erica Sayers. And from Wall High School, we recognize Mr. Les Hollander, Ms. Ellen Hollander, and Mr. Steve Bryant. These educators go above and beyond, arriving early, staying late, and giving extra lessons to support our students in their musical journeys. Music in Our Schools Month is a time to reflect on the power of music education. As the National Association for Music Education reminds us, music is not just an extracurricular activity, it is an essential part of a well-rounded education that helps students develop creativity, discipline, collaboration, and critical thinking skills. This month, we celebrate the impact that music education has in shaping well-rounded individuals and inspiring lifelong learners. Tonight, we also honor the hard work and achievements of our WTPS students who have earned special honors in competitive level bands, orchestras, and choirs. Some students could not be here tonight because they're actually auditioning for Allshore Band, but we have some other recognition for our students who could make it. Their dedication and perseverance have led them to excel in their craft, and we are incredibly proud of their accomplishments. Each of these students will receive a certificate and recognition of their excellence in music. Thank you to our teachers, students, families, and administration for making music a priority in our schools, and happy Music in Our Schools Month! We are gonna call the students up by name and recognize the different competitive honors level bands that students have got recognition in.
Thank you, Dr. Kennedy. Dr. Henterhand and Mr. Malif, will you join us? Please? Sorry, I gotta move your papers. Okay, our first category is, I feel, can I, I feel weird with my back towards everybody. Sorry. Felt a little strange with my back towards all of you and to talk to all of you. Now I have the board behind me, but that's okay. All right, so, our first category is Allshore Chorus of Monmouth and Ocean Counties. First up, Sam Elliott. Avery Ferrer Reese. Ava Manal. Karina Manal. Miles Simers. Nico Vitello. And Leah Yates.
So, when all the celebrations and announcements are done, we'll take group photos outside by the night by the front office, okay?
Do you guys wanna come this way? Because we have a lot to call. Come up this way. We're gonna span everybody, just watch the wire. Next category is Allshore Orchestra. We have Mackenzie Cavallari. Juliet Felice. John Lamonowitz. Mia Lamonowitz. Kelly Puzo. Jane Smith. And Lauren Tremblay. All right, I guess they're all auditioning for something else. We also have New Jersey Allstate Orchestra. Justin Lee. We're going to move on to... John's not here. We're gonna move on to Wall Intermediate School. We have the Region Two Wind Ensemble, and that is Octavio Esquivel. We have Allshore Band. We have Brady Connors. Octavio Esquivel. Luke McKenna. Matthew Angam Sitivergpong. Okay. Calla Terreri. And Samuel Schuman. Also at Wall Intermediate School, we have Allshore Orchestra. We have Julia Brown, I'm sorry, Julia Bowen. Isabel Freegan. And Colin Curry. Also at Wall Intermediate School, we have the CJMEA Middle School Honors Orchestra. Again, it's Julia Bowen. Violet Skelf, sorry, Skelfo. Kristen Jolly. Grace Hendrickson. Luciana Lamb. Isabel Fragan. Thomas Malanga. Samantha Shannon. Molly Sparanza. And Noel Clark. Here's Noel. And we also have some elementary students to highlight. The CJMEA Elementary Honors Band students, Matt Killian. Connor Owens. And Vincent Mavani. Congratulations to all the students who were able to join us and those who were unable to due to other things going on in their schedules, but we are so proud of all of their accomplishments. It's not an easy feat to do a lot of the competitions that you do, and we are just super proud of everything that you've done, and congratulations.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're gonna have our student representative report. We have Erin Ritchie and Michael Southwell here for our student representative report.
Winter sports have concluded their seasons with both boys' and girls' basketball teams making it to the sectional semifinals. Wrestling made it to their sectional final and had four District 24 winners. The ice hockey and swim teams all made it to their state tournaments. Sophomore sensation Donovan Klein capped off his incredible bowling season, winning the state championship, and is the New Jersey State Bowler of the Year. Congrats to Donovan. Spring sports are beginning scrimmages this week with tryouts having concluded last week. Our seniors are just returning from their amazing class trip to Walt Disney World where magical memories were made. While they were away, the Wall High School Counseling Department worked on finalizing course requests with our underclassmen to prepare for the 2025-2026 school year. Seniors are making final decisions about their post-secondary paths, with most admissions decisions expected by late March. We look forward to celebrating all of our students on May 1st as they commit to their colleges, universities, military, and career plans.
A huge shout out to the juniors for their outstanding effort during the NJGPA testing last week. Great job, everyone. We're excited to see the results of all your hard work. Neurodiversity activities kick off in Wall Public Schools on March 21st with Rock Your Socks Friday, a crazy sock-themed day in honor of Down Syndrome awareness. On Friday, the Wall Knights Social Club and Unified Students will have a special luncheon together, followed by activities taking place the week of March 31st. These activities include announcements on the morning show that highlight important neurodivergent members of society and a special display, case featuring artwork from our MD students and their classmates. Check the Wall High School website for more information of neurodiversity activities happening the week of March 31st through April 4th.
Thank you very much for your reports tonight, and I know you guys, seniors, you're both seniors, correct? All right, it's a very busy time for you. I know lots of anticipation coming up, not only for the end of this year, but beyond. We appreciate you taking your time to inform the board with this report, so you're welcome to stay, but you may leave if you certainly wish to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we are going to be opening the floor for public comment. The board requests that those individuals speaking will be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals. While making comments, specifically comments regarding individual students and school personnel, are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The Wall Township Board of Education bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Speakers should consider their comments in the light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments and recognize that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. And public comment individuals are limited to three minutes, and this is on any school-related issue. Anybody wishing to make a public comment, please, we have microphones down here and up the top of the auditorium.
Good evening. Betsy Cross, I live in Wall Township. Tonight, I stand before you not just as a concerned parent and grandparent, but as a proud mother, as a proud member of Moms for Liberty. As you're all aware, I believe deeply in the fundamental rights that our Constitution guarantees. The Fifth, Ninth, and Fourteenth Amendments are clear. We as parents have an undeniable right to direct the upbringing, education, and care for our children. This is not just a preference or a matter of personal opinion, it's our constitutional right. I'm here tonight again this month to speak about, to speak against Policy 5756. You will recall, I also mentioned it last month, a deafening silence. You have all had the last month to put it on the agenda to discuss it, and in my opinion, repeal it, but sadly, it is not on tonight's agenda. We have had numerous caring and intelligent people speak all across New Jersey to speak against this bill, and close to 40 schools have now abolished Policy 5756. Nine of them are in Monmouth County. It's important to note that this policy is not a law, it's not even a mandate, so why does Wall still have it? First and foremost, we do not co-parent with the government, even in Wall Township. So I'm asking if Mr. Malif or Dr. Henterhand can kindly provide us with an update rather than just ignoring the question again this month. I strongly believe the best way to support our kids is the removal of this policy. If you believe otherwise, you should state why. When our government works in the dark, nothing good comes out of it. You need to be honest and forthright, as you will all lose credibility when you just sit there month after month and don't acknowledge your constituents with valid questions. The very essence of parental rights is being threatened. What worries me, and what should worry all of us, is that there's a growing trend where the state and our own Wall Township school districts seems to be overstepping the rules. This isn't just a small overreach, it's a dangerous precedent for what's to come next. I'm sure you've all seen in the news about Peyton McNabb. She was a 17-year-old junior. She was injured, she was hit in the head, and she suffered brain damage. We can't have boys in the girls' locker rooms, we can't have boys on girls' sports. The policy, as it's written, allows secrets to be kept from the parents, and, you know, as a board member that have children in the school, I'm just not sure why you would even agree with that. The policy includes the following provisions. The principal or designated advisor to work with the student to create an appropriate confidentiality plan regarding your student's transgender or transitioning status. The school district shall keep confidential a current, new, or prospective student's transgender status. I mean, that to me is just outrageous. We cannot have the school co-parenting with the government. So we need this policy removed, and I hope you can comment on it this evening. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cross. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one else for public comment, we are going to close public comment at this time. All right, at this time, I'm gonna give my president's report. We have the students of the month. For Grade 9, we have Grace Osmond. Grade 10, Arabella Jimenez. Night of the week, Grade 10, Joanne Solano Caballero. Grade 11, Jace Ogul Walbriker. Grade 11, Davis Har, and also Grade 11, Colin Kurth. So congratulations to all those students. In addition, I'd just like to make a couple comments about some events. In addition, I'd just like to make a couple of comments about some events that I've attended over the past month. A few weeks ago, I attended, here in this very room, the Wall Intermediate School production of Beauty and the Beast, and it was a very wonderful presentation. I'd like to offer my congratulations to all of the student participants, the performers, as well as the crew, but also the advisors, and the many parents who contributed to the success of the event. I know there's lots of long hours in rehearsals, and when it really gets down to that crunch time, the last week or so before the production, I know there's probably some anxiety at home, and I'm sure that it was handled well. So it was a wonderful production. I'm looking forward to the high school production of The Addams Family coming up later on in the spring. Also, this past week, there was the Read Across America, where the schools, elementary schools primarily, were involved in that. And I want to thank the principals and the teachers for inviting members of the board. Some of the, I know Mr. Smith, Ms. Di Giovanni, Mr. Brereton were able to attend, as was myself. Dr. Henderhand, and Ms. McCann, and Ms. Bond, I think, also took opportunity to go as well. And so I want to thank, as I said, the principals, and the teachers, and especially the kids. And the kids, they were just so darn cute, and it was just really a wonderful thing. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Henderhand for the superintendent's report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Malef. That was definitely a highlight of March. It always is a highlight of March, Read Across America, and I concur, they are incredibly cute, so I look forward to it each year. So, good evening. I would like to formally thank the Wall High School Color Guard and Colonel Jacks for opening up our meeting. I would also like to thank our student representatives that gave up their time this evening, Ms. Erin Ritchie and Mr. Michael Southwell. Once again, I just want to circle back and congratulate our amazing and accomplished musicians that were here earlier this evening. You know, I have the pleasure of seeing the students practicing under, really, the tutelage of their music instructors, and the hard work, and I can attest that, you know, their practicing goes far beyond the classroom walls. You know, they're practicing at home, and they're just honing their skills, and it's such a wonderful opportunity for us to recognize all of their hard work at each and every level. You know, I have to say that I recognize how much the music program was such a, really, a point of pride when I joined the team at Wall Township Public Schools, so it's wonderful to see the skills developed throughout the continuum. I would also like to thank Mr. Tracy for his dedication to our mock trial team. I will tell you, having in my career been very involved at the high school level, mock trial, the amount of time that is spent really honing our teams to get ready for their courtroom experiences is, you know, it's a really special experience, and it's one that takes an awful lot of time. And the students really introduced their legal advisor so eloquently, because, and I think that they really do appreciate the time element, because it is mighty. And let alone, I believe Mr. Tracy has worked with our team for the last 10 years, so clearly it's a passion, and clearly, you know, it's really helping to shape our kids in such a positive way. So I thank him for his dedication and his service. The Special Services Department would like to invite the district to participate in World Down Syndrome Day this Friday, March 21st, by wearing bright and colorful socks. There is a global campaign called Rock Your Socks, where everyone is encouraged to wear fun and colorful socks. And this is to show the advocacy for rights, inclusion, and well-being of people with Down Syndrome. The idea behind the Rock Your Socks initiative is to recognize that our differences make us unique, while also remembering that we are more alike than we are different. It is observed on March 21st, 3/21, due to the trisomy 21 chromosomal difference that causes Down Syndrome. The district, as mentioned earlier by our students, will be celebrating Neurodiversity Week, March 31st through April 4th. Neurodiversity Celebration Week is a worldwide initiative that challenges stereotypes and misconceptions about neurological differences, while creating more inclusive and equitable cultures that celebrate differences and empower every individual. April is Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. You may have noticed that we have designated it on our agenda this evening. We formally recognize this to highlight the importance and commitment of all children's safety and well-being. On this evening's agenda, you will also see the tentative school budget for next year. I would like to stress that the key word is tentative. We are required to submit this tentative snapshot of our work in progress to the DOE by March 19th. A great deal of time and effort on the part of the Board of Education and central administration, as well as building administration, is dedicated to not only developing the annual school budget, but also to refine it. We are in the midst of this refinement process now. As many of you are aware, the budgeting process includes the work of board committees and a full board budget workshop session, which is held in public. The budget presentation and the formal public hearing is scheduled for April 29th. I wish to provide everyone with a friendly reminder that Thursday, March 27th, is an early dismissal for all students because of the district-wide professional development. You may have also noticed that a revised 2024-2025 school calendar is on tonight's agenda. As many of you are aware, we have two remaining snow slash emergency closing days. The proposed calendar revisions reflect schools closed on Monday, April 21st, and Friday, May 23rd. In the event there's an emergency closing following April 21st, school will be in session on Friday, May 23rd. I would like to remind everyone that the Crimson Knights Foundation Gala Awards are coming up. The Gala Awards take place on Thursday, March 27th, at 5:30 PM at the Spring Lake Manor. Please visit our district website for ticket information. Congratulations to this year's recipients, Ms. Gail Marr, Nancy Peterson, and Lieutenant Commander of the US Navy, Amy Zasick. Our total district enrollment numbers for February 2025 are as follows. Pre-K 76. Kindergarten, 229. First grade, 225. Second grade, 233 for second grade. For third grade, 248. Fourth grade, 235. Fifth grade, 282. Sixth grade, 238. Seventh grade, 255. Eighth grade, 258. Ninth grade, 219. Tenth grade, 217. Eleventh grade, 252. And 12th grade, 233. Kindergarten registration is underway. Parents, if you have children that will be five years of age on or before October 1st, please register your child for kindergarten. Please visit our websites for details. We have a dedicated page strictly for the registration. Again, there's a lot of congratulations, and I do want to, you know, encourage, well, congratulate the Crimson Knights Foundation Gala Award winners. We have three of them, and it would be amazing for you to join us for the celebration, and I do hope that you take the invitation to go to the website to learn about ticketing information. It promises to be a great night. It's a Knights tradition that the Crimson Knights Foundation, that they undertake to recognize just, you know, dedication to our schools and dedication to the community. So, again, please check it out, and congratulations to our winners this year. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to you, Mr. Malef. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Henderhand. At this time, we have the Board of Education update. Any members of the Board of Education wish to make an update or a comment at this time? Okay. Okay. Next, we're going on to committee reports. Committee reports are listed and can be found on the agenda. Any, anyone wish to make comments? Mr. Buffa?
Thank you, Mr. Malef. Just a quick couple things from FNF. We met last, I guess it was last week, March 11th. Another productive meeting. To recap what Dr. Henderhand had just mentioned about the budget, we are voting on that tonight. If anybody has any questions about that at any point, please feel free to reach out to me, Dr. Henderhand, or Mr. Smythe. Couple other things that I want to just touch on. Referendum project updates, detailed referendum project updates are on the website, under the referendum tab. Dr. Henderhand and Mr. Smythe do a nice job of making sure that they're updated frequently, so as soon as the FNF committee reviews them, they are updated very shortly thereafter, and they have details on project status, bid status, so on and so forth. So please take a look at that for more detailed information, and if you have any questions, let me know. One last thing I did want to touch on was, during our meeting, it was, we had discussed a lot of positive feedback from staff, students, members of the community regarding the significant amount of work that Mr. Crisanda and the Operations Department did on the baseball fields and the softball field. They kind of went the extra yard this year and did, like I said, a significant amount of work, and it did not go unnoticed. We got a lot of positive feedback. District Administration received a lot of positive feedback, and I just wanted to make sure that we publicly thanked them for, you know, doing a little extra this year to make sure things are the way they should be. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Buffa. And again, the minutes of the four committee meetings can be found on tonight's agenda. At this time, we're going to, any other comments from any of the other committee chairs? Okay. At this time, we're going to open up the floor for our second public comment, and this comment, these comments are to be directed to items on tonight's agenda. Anyone wishing to come up to speak to items on tonight's agenda?
Betsy Cross, I live in Wall. I was just going through the agenda, and I was looking under the Bills and Claims Report, and for health benefits, you have a separate health benefit sheet for $1,366,475, but then under the operating account, you have a separate amount of $133,123,823. I was just wondering, why are they in two different sections now? I did put in Oprah for bills for Horizon, and I've gotten them in the past, but now Mr. Smythe would like to charge me a fortune to get them. So I'll decide what I'm going to do with that, but there's a precedent of providing Horizon insurance bills, so to now not give them and want to charge me, I don't think it's the way you want to go. I see you're going out for quotes for the broker. I mean, not quotes, yeah, quotes, not bids. You should be going out for quotes, so I hope we're not going to tailor it so that we can get Brown to Brown again. I think they've been awful. We haven't seen any type of updates on what you're saving for self-insurance. I think you're budgeting another $1,006 this year for health benefits. So without sharing information, nobody knows what you're doing. And now, when you want to charge for Horizon bills, it's a big red flag for me. I totaled up, I mean, at the end, Dr. Henderhand, maybe you could say what the total student count is, so that we don't have to do it. It looks like, not counting pre-K, 3,124 students, but maybe every month, you can just say the total, not counting that, so we know where we're going. It looks like we're going to have a real decline in the next couple of years in the high school, because you only have 219 and 217 in freshman and sophomore years, so that's a big drop. I hear a lot of students are leaving the high school next year. I have a lot of people that are afraid to come to meetings, they're afraid of their child being targeted and things like that, so it's really disappointing. Terms of the budget, if you could, I know you're passing a resolution tonight to go to the county, but if you could give any type of update of how you came up with the number, it would really be appreciated. You know, since we can't ask questions, we can go to the meeting, but we can't have anything in front of us that you're looking at, and we can't ask questions, this number means nothing to me, except, I think, $1,006 extra for health benefits, which should really be explained. I see Athena Cornell's attorney bills, just for one month on here, over $15,000. When I look at other school districts, their attorney bills are nothing like this for Athena Cornell's firm. I looked at Rumsfeld Haven, where you came from, Dr. Henderhand. I've looked at a number of the schools, but you've got to get these attorney bills under control. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cross.
I'd like some answers to my questions. If you can't give them tonight, maybe you can write them and send me an email. Thank you, Mr. Malef.
Is there anyone else for public comment on agenda items? Seeing no one, we're going to close public comment. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda with the exception of Item 16E. Can I have a motion for that?
I'll second.
Mr. Brereton, Mr. Buffa, roll call, Mrs. Smythe?
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Yes.
On the motion on the table, consent agenda, Item 12, with the exception of 16E.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Adenizio?
Yes, but I'm also going to recuse myself from Number 13, the minutes, since I wasn't at that meeting.
Noted. Ms. Barbier?
Yes.
Mr. Brereton?
Yes.
Mr. Buffa?
Yes.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Malef?
At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to return to executive session, where there will be no action taken at that time. There will be no act, go ahead.
So we're moving back into executive session, however, when we reconvene the public, it'll only be to adjourn the meeting. No action will be taken after the executive session.
What are the topics?
Can I have a, Mr. Adenizio?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Buffa?
To clarify, the agenda items...
Oh, go ahead.
It'd be the agenda items from the previous executive session.
Okay, yeah, it would be the agenda items that were on the previous executive agenda that we were not able to get to before 7 o'clock. Okay, go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?